Okay, well, welcome to the September 29th, City Council Rule Select Committee meeting. We are being audio and video recorded. Laura, would you please do the roll call?
Sure, Councilor Mayori.
Here.
Vice Chair Simon.
Here.
Member Baskin.
Here.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
And Counselor Foster is not yet present, but to join shortly.
So I'm going to use my chair discretion and move public comment after an approval of minutes after the agenda item timelines associated with financial orders, question and answer discussion with Mayor Narcoits, and the mayor has commitment, can only stay for a little bit. So yeah, so Mayor Narcoits, welcome.
Thank you, thank you Chair Mayori, and thank you to the members of this select committee for inviting me. I understand the question that you're asking, and so I'm happy to just speak to it. You know, I think it's important to sort of understand the sort of the history of how I think how this system evolved. Obviously, prior to the adoption of the modern 2012 charter, you know, in 2012, the mayor was the chair of the city council and actually was the chair of the finance committee. The finance committee was, you know, a council committee, but the mayor was the chair of it, sort of de facto, and the mayor and the finance director sort of set the agenda for the finance committee and sort of drove that. There was actually another committee as well, EDLU or Economic Development Housing and Land Use, which was another committee of the council that was chaired by the mayor, and actually the mayor and the economic development director sort of drove the agenda. It had counselors on it, but the mayor was the chair of it. And so, and so I think that the, the sort of the tradition or the history of the finance committee being sort of baked into, at least one of the meetings being baked into council meetings sort of grew out of that tradition. Because all sort of financial orders get driven, you know, must be submitted by the mayor. They must emanate from the mayor and like the budget, et cetera. So I think that's sort of how it came about. I mean, I always wondered about the process as well, because it is definitely unlike any of our other committees where, you know, something is introduced and then it gets referred to a committee. So when 2012 happened and the, you know, the separation of powers occurred, the formal separation of powers, you know, I was actually, you know, one meeting I was chairing the city council. And then the next, I think, I was then no longer chairing. And so, but, and so, you know, everything kind of got untangled. The mayor obviously was no longer the chair of those two committees, was no longer, you know, part of the agenda setting. And, but I think the council, because it was sort of the tradition and, you know, it did sort of work very smoothly, sort of kept that nomenclature of the finance committee, you know, sort of appearing at the beginning and, and then, you know, continuing. And so, so I understand the concerns about it, and I understand it is different than all the rest in terms of the normal legislative process, and it's even different than other city councils that I'm familiar with. You know, most have a, have a finance committee and, and orders get, get referred to it. So I would, you know, I'm, I'm obviously would defer to the council on what it chooses to do with this in terms of wanting to restructure it. I guess the only thing I would ask sort of two, sort of two concerns that I would raise about it, and it just would be something depending on how you decide to change your, the rules or amend the rules that you would be mindful of, and that is, first, you know, there are circumstances where there are strict timelines for needing to make a financial order or transfer. And so, you know, having the ability to waive referral to the, to that committee would be, I think, important. You know, I can think of, you know, one very common one that happens year after year after years, you know, there's the final, usually the final meeting. It's the first meeting in July, but it's the last opportunity in the fiscal year to make final transfers, to move items around within the budget before the actual cutoff on July 15th. So typically, the, the finance director will bring a slew of orders at that July meeting to just true up accounts. We're not appropriating new money, we're not spending new things, but we're sort of moving monies around to make sure that no accounts end in deficit. So obviously, that would be hard to do, and it would be hard to do well enough in advance, because it's, it's an end of year exercise. So having the ability to waive referral there would be good. And then, you know, there's just other things like, you know, we, we may have a capital project that needs some additional funding. You know, I think of like the Academy of Music. We've got an order coming before you at the next meeting. The Academy of Music ran into some additional unforeseen costs in their project. They're actually going to pay for it. They're going to put money forward to pay for it. But it's, you know, obviously, it's a construction project that's in process, so we need to get that funding approved. You know, and so those types of things. And then there's just the emergencies where, you know, we may have to emergently appropriate funds for some kind of a, you know, emergency repair. Or occasionally, you know, there are even instances where the building commissioner, you know, has a major health or safety hazard and needs to emergently have an appropriation of funds to address it. Typically doesn't spend those funds, but because typically the property owner ends up paying for it. But, so I can think of several examples where having the ability to do that in an expedited fashion would be helpful. So, you know, I guess that would be, that would be one thing I would just want to make sure that it was not going to be like a, everything always must be referred, that there need to be some flexibility. And, you know, the council has the ability to waive its rules, you know, with the exception of referring appointments to your, your city services, which is a requirement of the charter. You know, you should be able to waive them. And then the only other consideration would just be staff time and, you know, the understanding of whether or not, you know, I mean, obviously, one of the other advantages to the system we have now is that, you know, the finance director comes to the finance committee meeting and, you know, all the other counselors are sort of there as well. And so they hear all the information. And so then when it moves into the council meeting, then, you know, then there's, you know, they, they've sort of followed the conversation and understand it. So, you know, I guess the question would be, you know, what would be the, you know, would, would the finance director come to the finance committee? And then also come to the city council meeting as well? I, I would kind of want to understand that piece of it. And, you know, obviously, if, if the finance, if director and the mayor came to the finance committee and explained it to the council or to the finance committee, and then the finance committee made a recommendation to the full city council, then the question would be, would the, you know, would the finance committee make the explanation to the full city council or, you know, et cetera. So just some logistical things in terms of staff time and, and just understanding what would be, what the expectations would be, I guess. But from a pure, like, you know, statutory, other than emergencies or other than, you know, these sort of end of year transfers where there's, you know, just by virtue of the exercise at the final end of the year, when you're, you know, making the last payrolls in June and you're making the last bills in June, you can anticipate what, what final transfers need to be made in that July meeting. You know, having the flexibility to do that would be important. So I guess that's my take on it.
Thank you. Before the mayor has to go, does anyone have any questions for the mayor on this? Counselor Dwight?
I would say we, oh, sorry.
No.
I would also say, I would just say, we, you know, we also, under that old tradition, always had an off council meeting on the books or at least on the calendar. It was often the fourth Tuesday or some, yeah, I think it was the fourth Tuesday. And so there was some business that happened in the finance committee that didn't happen at the, at the main meeting. And again, it was, it was on a as-needed basis for things like, you know, I don't know, TIPS or, or, or just maybe audits, maybe more meteor issues that were not just a pure council order sort of thing. So, you know, it's not that we haven't had these off meetings. But, so I just wanted to also point that out. It hasn't been utilized lately. But again, I think it was more when the mayor chaired it, it was an opportunity for the mayor to be able to use that forum to be able to begin introducing something to the council at the committee level before, and get feedback from the finance committee before advancing it further. So.
Thank you. Counselor Dwight?
So, thank you, Your Honor. And, and actually, you should know that part of the conversations have been around the issue of second reading, the, the unique exercise that's done by this council. And one of the things that Counselor Foster hit on, on our last meeting that I took to call him the the Foster Epiphany, which is that if, if we eliminate the necessity for two readings or two votes, as it were, we call it two readings for reasons that still pass understanding. But the, what that allows us to do is to treat financial orders, not unlike the way we treat any orders that come through, is we, the first reading is when they're introduced to the council and then they get referred to committee. And then whereas where it stands as the second reading, it would actually come before the council after the finance committee has reviewed it. So that allows us to establish a freestanding separate finance committee meeting in the intervening time between council meetings, which addresses a lot of the problems and challenges, I think, in some, in, in a rather large way that allows more public access and comment in subcommittee. And also, as far as staff time goes, it, it does, I think, avoid the fact that, for instance, we would have Susan Wright sit sometimes till midnight before she got to make her presentation, you know, the finance committee, the finance director. In this case, they would be the agenda item, they would be present at the, at the finance committee meeting that's devoted exclusively to those issues that were referred to it. So hopefully, one of the concerns, one of the reasons I, I had asked for you to come speak was to talk about state-established and DOR-established clocks that start ticking, that create the, the, sometimes the necessity for, for sec, for, you know, doing two readings in one meeting. So, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm getting a message from Karen Foster. I don't have my phone, so can't text Laura and Rachel. I'm in the waiting room. Can you help me get into the meeting?
Oh, no.
So if you can.
Right now.
Okay. So.
If you get my notes.
So the, I mean, that's the thing that also passes understanding for us, or that we're not clear on, is what are the time constraints that we need to address or at least reconcile as we, as we draft these rules?
I mean, I think, I think, you know, I, I touched on, you know, an example of kind of a statutory, you know, time deadline, which is, you know, the, the end of the fiscal year. And the fact that there are some things that have to happen at the end of the fiscal year that you don't know until you get to the end of the fiscal year. So that's one example. Sometimes there are cases like with large capital projects where you, you know, an appropriation is made for a capital project. You go out to bid and, and there's an over, you know, the bid comes in slightly higher, you know, $20,000 higher. And so you can't sign a contract unless you have the full appropriation. So, you know, again, a situation where, you know, it's, 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 you know, April or May, the capital plan's been approved. The orders have been approved. The school is desperately trying to get these projects done over the summer when the schools are closed. And so having the ability to say, you know, this is a, this is a project that the finance committee and the council looked at. It's, it's more a matter of an additional funding allotment to it. Could you waive referral for that? So, you know, because in some cases, it's not only the time limit, sometimes bids only are good for so many days, you know. You know, a bid may be good for 30 days in some situations or 45 days. So the clock starts ticking when the bids are open. So, so that would be, I mean, those are the ones that come to mind, you know, that might have a time parameter on them. You know, obviously, if there was some kind of a emergency land taking that happened as part of a project where, you know, like we've seen recently on, you know, like the King Street project, where they suddenly discover that, you know, a whole section of a street was never accepted properly. And so we need to get it accepted. And, you know, those property type orders go to the finance committee. So I think it's just really, you know, those types of things that are truly necessitated by some time clock that just having the flexibility to do that. And then the other thing is I would just, it would be for the, for the finance director and their team and department heads to kind of understand the rhythm of this. It would be great to sort of schedule the finance committee meetings, you know, so that they would sort of fall nicely between, you know, you know, an order goes to a council meeting, then it gets referred. And then there's enough time, you know, during that second meeting of the month or, or the second week of the month, between the first and third, that the finance committee could then act on it and make its recommendation. You know, I just, again, so that you're not, sort of the same thing we ran into a little bit with appointments, where there was a little bit of a time clock on appointments, but just, you know, just so that it doesn't take two and a half to three months to, you know, transfer, you know, $20,000 into an account or something like that. That's all. So I think it would just be important to schedule it, to time it well, so that it could, everything could still function efficiently in that regard.
Oh, thank you.
And you could, you could obviously, if you weren't, if you wanted more time, you could obviously continue any item to a future meeting. So you could definitely slow down the process at any point, but I just think constructing the system so that it would work efficiently would be good.
Thank you. Vice Chair Simon, did you have a question for the mayor?
Yeah, I want to talk about this issue of the referrals and the, the process that's been in place, because my reading of the rules suggests that there isn't a affirmative referral required by the city council to the finance committee before the finance committee can exercise its jurisdiction in the rules. So the, the matter about referrals says the council may refer, but the, the finance committee, along with the other committees, have very specific jurisdiction already. So I'm wondering why, for example, why the administration couldn't communicate directly to the finance committee to have something reviewed and then brought to the council once for resolution?
I mean, I think that's sort of how it, how, that's how it sort of, the system kind of evolved, because the mayor was the chair of the finance committee and set the agenda. And so it was really, that was sort of how it, how this evolved. You know, it, it, it all comes down to sort of the primacy of the, of the body versus the subcommittees. And typically, the body, the main body is the one that takes action, including referring things to its committees. So, and in deciding what, what gets referred where. So, you know, you could certainly adapt for that for finance matters, but you would be sort of setting up the finance committee as a separate sort of, you know, it would have more power than the other committees, and it would, and it would, you know, kind of be a gatekeeper above the city council in that, with regard to financial orders. So I, you know, it's, it's really, I think it's a philosophical question. On the school committee, for example, you know, we have, you know, are, we have a budget and, we have a budget and property committee. And we do have, there are, there are, things get referred to budget and property, but there are some accepted things that go straight to budget and property for review. You know, the, the superintendent will often do sort of a preview of his, of his budget with the budget and property committee as the sounding board feedback before it's presented to the main. But those are kind of spelled out things, so you could certainly craft something like that. But, you know, I mean, generally, you know, everything comes, I guess, that, that would be my answer. You'd have to set up a two-tiered system for finance that's different from all the other committees like, like we have now and give, and give the discretion to go straight to finance.
Yeah.
But if you really were to adapt the two-reading thing, that would actually, you know, that would definitely, if you were going to treat the referral as the first reading, then that would actually, you know, that in and of itself would be great in terms of making the system more efficient. Because if you would have to come to the city council, if it gets preferred, then it has to be, would have to be on three months and a half.
Mayor, excuse me, I'm just wondering, is anyone else? Mayor, I don't know if anyone else is having trouble hearing you. Okay, so would you mind turning off your camera to see if we, if it'll make the audio clearer for us? We'd like to hear what you were saying. It was a little broken up. Why did we lose you? Are you still with us, mayor?
Okay.
I think we can hear you better now. Oh, I think we lost him. Let's just wait and see if he logs back on.
And now he sounded like an echo.
Yeah, the, the point I wanted to make here is that this seems to be another example of a, of a cultural practice that adopted over time that the rules don't require. And if you, if you prefer to do it this way, you should write the rules that say this is the way it ought to be done. But there seems to be in the existing rules as they're written, the opportunity to already do something different. That's, that's the point I was bringing up.
All right. While we wait for the mayor, I just want to announce to any, to Counselor Foster and any other folks joining us that we, at my discretion, I moved first agenda item before public comment approval of the minutes, because the mayor had a time restricted timeline. So after the mayor's done speaking, we will move on to public comment. But I'm just going to give him one more minute to see if he logs back on. Yeah. I guess we should, does anyone, I guess we should, we'll move on. Up, here he is. Hi, mayor. I see him trying to connect his audio.
Yeah, interestingly, there's no microphone visible, so I don't know if he has audio.
Oh, yeah.
There he is, the microphone.
You. Are you with us, mayor? Did he disappear? Hi. Okay. Can you hear us, mayor? He's trying. Were there more questions from committee members for the mayor? Just wondering, in case you do lose him again. Oh. Right. Oh, now we don't have your audio. Let's see. Yeah, we can't hear you. That's okay. We might have been wrapping up. Did, was there any more? I think we were, mayor, I think we're, we're okay. I don't think there's any more questions for you, and we really appreciate you joining us here tonight. Thank you so much. I think he's frozen. Okay. Well, I think we're going to declare that one done. Thank you again, Mayor, Mayor Narcoits. And we are going to move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? You could raise your hand. Oh, and one process note. Okay, one process note, I don't, for closed caption, Zoom has changed. And now you, you individually turn on closed caption under more at the bottom lower right-hand part of your Zoom screen. Right. And also, I want to make the announcement, I saw a question in the chat from Elijah, that you, you may make a comment and public comment, and, but if you would like, I can recognize you during the deliberation of the youth commission agenda item, and we could, and then you can speak there as well. So I guess it's, it's your choice. Or you could do one or both. That, that agenda item is two, is a, is a few, a few agenda items down, so you can decide. I'm going to start with Megan, Megan Peck, because her hand is raised, and then we'll go from there. Good evening, Megan. Thank you for joining us. You're muted.
All right. So you weren't able to hear the smoke alarms that were.
No, we did not.
Okay. So my name is Megan Peck, and I've met most of you before. Just want to say you're doing very timely and critical work, and I'm glad to have skimmed the video of your last meeting. And I thank you for the candor and the thoughtfulness and the thoroughness that you're bringing to this meeting. I have a lot to say, but I do, do I have the usual three minutes?
Oh, if, we have been kind of informal about that, so I would just say, I'll let you know if it's, you know, I would, just to proceed, and I'll let you know if it seems like we're going on too much, but.
Okay, I'm going to try to speak quickly, because I have to have another Zoom call in 30. So I wanted to share two things that seem pertinent to the charge of the Royals Commission, the Royals Committee. But I'm really kind of uncertain that this is a proper context to bring up either of these matters, because even though I'm familiar enough with some of you to have asked me for the meeting, I think that does speak to the problem that's raised by Member Baskin, that pervades the lack of understanding about what is within the purview and authority of the individual council subcommittees or even the voluntary commissions and boards. For instance, the Human Rights Commission has such a broad mandate, it's broad enough that anyone can bring forth what the city solicitor characterizes as any manner of societal ills, which often is really related to just ordinary lack of, you know, accessible parking and affordable housing in town and what residents receive as like a lack of agency when they try to participate in their government. And you can imagine the, the lack of wherewithal of the four or five attending members that meet once a month. We politely, patiently, as you are listening to a stranger who, you know, could be quite emotional or even adversarial about and engage in this monologue about an issue or current event that's not on our monthly agenda or in our charter authority or current priorities. And certainly, I've been on the other side of that as well in public comment. But the first part of what I like to share is, you know, as a coacher of the HRC, I just spoken to the Director of Forbes Library, Lisa Downing. She reached out to our commission after March to propose collaboration around racial justice education programming. We're now exploring a training about implicit bias where the leadership of the city that would be facilitated by Holaback, who are known for their bystander intervention trainings. I know that Counselor Mayori has mentioned this really well-regarded national organization in council before. Holaback offers really accessible, focused, sufficient sessions led by staff of color for general audience. They've rapidly expanded in the last few years to provide corporate and other institutional trainings as well that focus on conflict, de-escalation workplace, and the era COVID, in addition to their well-known ones for marginalized populations, allyship. So we see an opportunity with the, you know, new council term and with the large number of new counselors coming in, and, excuse me, I'm going to turn off the audio for my second meeting here. And, you know, for, for city staff who aren't first responders, that may find this type of implicit bias training valuable. I think that our current mayor would probably be supportive of this decision, but given this, our planning timeframe, we will be reaching out to the mayor-elect to determine her or his interest in funding and promotion of this training. And the HRC and Forbes will continue to coordinate and host it. You know, possibly as part of the new council's orientation or, you know, staff's professional development. So the second possible initiative of HRC is to begin working with the Forbes Library staff to promote and educate about the local history of North Hampton, you know, the, its settler colonialism as it relates to our marginalized populations and current tensions around housing. I think there's some resonance with this committee as well because one project may be to for us to connect with local native advocates to develop land acknowledgement for our public meetings. Once the HRC has a sample that feels collaborative and sensitive and relevant for North Hampton, we will ask the council and other boards and commissions, especially those within educational or advocacy bent, to consider adopting for their own meetings. And we are not deliberately attempting to link in our city meetings. We want to be cognizant and clear-eyed that land acknowledgements are fraught with controversy and can appear just to be performative gestures when they're not tied to meaningful reparations or other actions that, you know, improve the material political circumstances of indigenous peoples. And they're, you know, often bred in this safe space on conquered lands where there's no political consequences for those who participate in that ritual. But like our council resolutions, you know, they are a statement of shared communal values and hopefully will serve to educate or remind us of missed history lessons. Sometimes they just have to proceed meaningful action. So I do have to go, and thank you so much for listening to this over long monologue. I look forward to hearing the rest of the meeting on tape, thank you, goodbye.
Thank you so much, Megan. Elijah. Welcome.
Yes, um. Um. Thank you so much, uh, it's great to be here, uh, so I'll just start by um, introducing myself, my name is Elijah. Um. Um. Um, Bacall, I'm a junior at North Hampton High School and I'm the the, the new co-chair of the North Hampton Youth Commission along with the other co-chair Dahlia Brez, Brez. Dahlia Brezlo, as a side note, I do stutter, just so you know, so if at any point when you're talking to me or I'm talking and it takes me a longer time to get my words up, that's why. I'm, I'm really excited to work with you all for the remainder of this term and this year in this new capacity, I've, I've never been to, this is the first meeting of the council that I'm going to in my capacity as, as co-chair, so I'm, you know, I'm, I'm really excited to work with you on and talk to you about legislation and initiatives for, you know, the remainder of the term. Um. Um, and beyond, I, I, I'm at this meeting because the Youth Commission is on the agenda to be discussed later on, and I do plan on, on staying, staying on the call until then, in case there are any, in case during your deliberation there are any, you know, questions or concerns that come up. That might be good for me to comment on, I, I'm, if, if you want, so I'll just stay on in case of that, but I'm just speaking now to introduce myself and to talk a little bit about, you know, the things that, you know, you know, the, the things that we might want to see changed about the way the Youth Commission is framed in the city rules and the city codes. I, I want to start by saying that, you know, I and the whole Youth Commission are, are, you know, incredibly thankful that the city has given us the, you know, the trust and responsibility that you do, it's, it's, it's a real privilege for us to be, you know, young people fully getting to lead a, a government body ourselves, and I'm, I'm really grateful to have that opportunity myself and to be able to, you know, you know, spread that opportunity to my peers as, as well, but there are, um, so, you know, building off of that, there are a few things that, um, you know, based on what the Youth Commission's work has been, like what, what the business of the commission has been over the past few years, a few changes that I think could be made in the way that it's framed in the city code, I'm looking at a chapter A of the administrative code right now, which, which describes the Youth Commission. You know, just to better clarify what our work is in, in, you know, in real life, you know, on paper, so uh, uh, one thing is we are officially right now called the North Hampton Mayor's Youth Commission, I believe. Full disclosure, we have been for, you know, in the recent past calling ourselves the North Hampton Youth Commission. Because we, we think it's more, more accurately descriptive of the work that we do. Most, if not all of our initiatives over the past year or two have been working on ordinances with the city council, such as in our, our housing group and our sustainability working group and in our our vote 16 working group, which worked a lot with the Charter Committee of the City Council. Our, our education group has been working with the school committee a lot and communicating with school committee members. Like I said, our housing group has communicated with the, the, the housing partnership as well as the city council, like I said, so, you know, although, you know, it's my understanding that the Youth Commission was originally formed as a a body in the city to kind of advise the mayor on youth issues, I, we think that a more accurate way to describe us now would just be like, you know, any other, any other government body in North Hampton who, you know, works, works, you know, primarily with the city council as well as other bodies in the city as opposed to just being being advisory to the mayor. So one other thing. One. So, and then the, the only other thing is as I was, um, as I was reading just this, this brief description in the city code today, it did say that there shall be a youth commission consisting 21 members from the age of 13 through 18. So the other change we'd like to make is I, you know, if possible, I would like to either, you know, greatly extend or completely remove that limit for the reason that for one, I mean, just practically, this has, this has not been observed over the last few years, you know, we've had the mayor come in and swear us in, you know, in person and then remotely over the past few years where there, you know, there have been clearly more than 21 members in it. You know, no issue about that has, has been raised, and two, you know, we're cogn, we're cognizant of the fact, you know, that, that a lot of high schoolers in North Hampton have obligations to work after school, outside of school have obligations to take care of their siblings or, 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 or other family members, we don't, you know, we want to make the Youth Commission as, as, you know, equitable and representative of, of, you know, what the youth of North Hampton look, 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 look like and do, and a part of that is, I think, you know, removing the barriers to entry and allowing people to participate in it to an extent, to the extent that they want and having that kind of numerical limit, making it running into making it potentially a competitive thing down the road where their applications involved is really a kind of against, you know, the mission that we've, that we've tried to set for ourselves over the past few, few years, so those are the two. Uh, thank you again for, for, for listening, those are the two major changes that I think I would like to make to how the Youth Commission is, has been framed in the city, like I said, I will on, stay on the call until you know, through the Youth Commission agenda item in case there are any concerns that, that come up that I could, could, could 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 address, but yeah, um, thanks so much.
Thank you, Elijah, that'd be great, so yeah, we have a couple more agenda items and then, thank you for being willing to stick around. Okay, let's see, um, oh, I have a I believe, is that empty box, was that, is that Megan's? Is that, I see a hand in an empty box.
Megan's hand is still up, I think.
Okay, she might still be on the, well, I don't see any other public comment, so I'm going to read. I haven't gotten to read it first, so I have to read a comment sent from David Murphy who could not join us. But wanted to, but wanted to comment on the Finance Committee, so here we go. From David Murphy, "Perhaps the most important function of the city council is financial oversight of the budget and the executive branch of city government. Not every councillor is a member of the Finance Committee, but every councillor shares the responsibility of financial oversight. The tradition of having the Finance Committee meet during the council meeting is to, one, expose all councillors to financial orders or other matters before the committee. Two, allow every councillor to ask questions about the matter on the floor from the mayor or finance director who are most often in attendance at a council meeting. Three, quickly dispose of matters that are routine or that need action that evening." Uh-oh.
I'm screen sharing. I don't have to. Whoops.
Can, can you, can you still hear me?
Yes.
That was strange.
I started screen sharing and maybe that was interrupted unwittingly.
Yeah, I'm having some very strange Zoom things, there's little black boxes, like little rectangles over Councillor Foster and Councillor Dwight.
Oh dear.
That's, that's very interesting, well, maybe we, yeah, maybe I'll, I'll just read it then, continue reading it.
Yeah, just in case it's related to the screen sharing, I won't.
Yeah, that's, there's been glitches in Zoom lately, I've noticed, more than there used to be, I don't know what's happening. We had one during full council meeting. Okay, so we were at the, the, having Finance Committee meet during the council meeting, and so I think I said, three, quickly dispose of matters that are routine or that need action that evening. And four, to help educate new council members on financial process and procedure. If one of the matters before the Finance Committee meeting during the council session is determined by the body to require more public exposure, it can be continued to the next Finance Committee meeting, not held during the council session. Then adequate public notice can be given, and members of the public can comment on the committee level, at the committee level, with more and give and take between the committee and public speakers. "In the eight years I chaired the Finance Committee, we used our meeting outside of council to, one, interview auditors to perform the annual budget review. Two, review the results of the finished audit of the budget with the auditor and their staff. Three, sell or lease city property like the Nonna, Nonna Tuck preschool, Florence Grammar School, and the South Street School. Four, review the capital plan. And five, hold public hearings on a financial matter when signed to do so by the full council. The current process for the Finance Committee had evolved over time and been continued because it works. Makes efficient use of the mayor and finance director's time, exposes all the councillors to financial matters. If a matter comes up during the council's Finance Committee meeting that you wish to give more exposure to the public, just keep it in the Finance Committee and continue it to the next Finance Committee meeting outside of council for comment. Do not make the process more cumbersome than it needs to be." David. Um, okay, so if there's, I don't see any other further public comment, so now we are at the agenda items. Um, let's see, oh, no, I'm sorry, we are at approval of the minutes, actually.
Move to approve the minutes, please.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please, Laura. I can't hear you, Laura. Huh, you know, Laura, you're, I don't see your mic.
Councillor Mayori.
Oh yeah, yes.
Member Baskin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Simon.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
And Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, minutes from September 15th, 2021 approved unanimously. All right, on to agenda item, clarification and simplification of Finance Committee recommendation. This agenda item is included to simply allow further discussion and clarification of the Finance Committee recommendation made at the September 15th meeting, if called for, no specific change is proposed. Yeah, Laura and I had a conversation and realized we could benefit from just, you know, a few minutes of really clarifying this point. So if there's any discussion around it, we can, we have the space to do so. Yes, Councillor Dwight.
So, my understanding, or at least, yeah, my understanding is that the consensus was that we and it depends on the next item and the, on the agenda, so I just, and then I'm going to refer to it, 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 should we suspend the, the traditional way of we address two readings? Then we in fact actually are already structured to function the way we've been struggling to try and figure out, and that is financial orders and items will be introduced in the first meeting of the month or whatever meeting. And then subsequent, and then referred to finance, but in, where the finance meeting would convene separate from out of the body and before the next meeting, where they will discuss and decide what should be referred to on the, well, actually, no, I'm sorry, I, I take it back, this is the way I was thinking, but the, the body here generally considered that what we would do is figure out what would go on the, the version of a consent agenda. Items that would be pro forma that would be addressed at the next meeting, and then items that required more granular analysis and discussion would be referred to the Finance Committee, which, which, if it had items referred to, it would convene be previous to the next meeting. And then come back with recommendations that would be addressed and voted on in that meeting or continued if need be. So, and I, and, and I still hold that that actually works out pretty well, and I also, even, even to the concerns expressed by Councillor Murphy, former Councillor Murphy, aspiring Councillor Murphy, that tho, those same issues would be addressed. The purpose of that also allows for greater public access for comment, discussion, and also for the council, you know, the concern relative to staff time that the mayor brought up and that has been brought up. As I said, I mean, we've, in the past, what's happened when we've had to have these financial orders, the, the Finance Director has to spend an eternity sitting there waiting for us to get through the rest of the agenda. And sometimes completely unnecessarily, particularly when they're making a presentation or whatever, we can, that, the agenda can be adjusted to accommodate that staff person. When they're going to a meeting dedicated exclusively to their conversation discussion, they know that when they show up at the time designated, they will, they won't have to sit there for hours on end waiting to see if there, there are questions for them. That's, and it seems to me that is a far more efficient and far more productive expenditure of their time, and also, you know, and to the mayor's points, it's also important that, you know, there be a regularly scheduled time so that they can actually prepare to accommodate that as, over the course of a year, as budget items present themselves, but that was my understanding of the, what we were, what we were discussing or at least considering.
Thank you, yeah, I just really wanted to make sure we're all on the same page of understanding, um, Member Baskin.
That was my understanding as well, I still like that, I still think it makes sense, I think we should be forward with recommending that.
Okay. Okay. No Chair Simon.
Uh, Vice Chair, thank you.
I'm sorry. I just promoted you.
We did, yeah, we did. We did in fact make a recommendation to do just that.
Um, so. Right, there was just when, when I was talking with lawyer, lawyer, Laura, there was the points of, um, we just thought there was, it was a little. Confusion and we thought it would be, take the time to really make sure we're on the same page. Yes, councillor, oh, uh, councillor. Uh, Laura, I mean Laura and then councillor Foster.
I don't know if it's my place, but the only question I had about the process was at what point the mayor would be making his presentation. About the orders, would it be at the council meeting when they're making the decision of whether to put it on the consent agenda or refer it to finance? Or would it be at the finance meeting or, or both?
Right, that's right. That's why we decided to put that under. Um, well councillor Foster and then councillor Dwight.
Yeah, thank, thank you councillor Mary and Laura, actually for putting this on the agenda, because I appreciate the chances to make sure that we're all in agreement. Councillor Dwight and, and member Baskin, sounds like we are. Um, that was what, um, how I remembered it as well. And Laura, my understanding or the way I had envisioned it was that the presentation would actually be made to council. About the financial order and then council would decide whether to move it forward to the consent agenda for the next meeting or refer it. To finance committee, but what that did is it allowed all of the council members to have that, that deep awareness of what's going on with financial orders. And then if it needs to be studied further, finance committee could do that. And so then probably the, the, another question we'll need to answer and not necessarily tonight is what the structure or when we would want those finance committee meetings to be scheduled. To accommodate that deeper review prior to the meeting.
Thank you, councillor Foster. Councillor Dwight.
Uh, councillor Foster, I, I was going to say just that, it, the, the mayor. The mayor or their designate would be, would make a presentation at the initial introduction, because as the mayor noted. The mayor, um, introduces those items unlike the other items that we, that we set our own agenda. In that case, the mayor should introduce it or their designate. Um, it's not required that the, it could be the financial director, it could be someone in their office. But the, the presentation would be made someone who at least. Um, more. Uh, would be capable of answering at least more basic questions. Usually we don't have a debate during referral. But there sometimes may be some process questions or some other things that they would be able to address, but other than that, I, I don't, I don't. And then it's entirely up to the mayor, because you recall and under the charter, basically we can invite the mayor, the mayor's not required to come, but. And the same thing with the introduction of the finance committee. It's in the mayor's best interest if they feel it's in their best interest to come and make their presentation there as well, so. It's, it's not on us at that point and, and I think that works out fine.
Uh, thank you for that, because that was the point that I, that Laura and I were not clear, so that's why we, we wanted to review that. Um, member Baskin.
This is a side note to this, but I wonder if in terms of making the council rules more accessible. We might consider putting in the appendices. Like in addition to defining things like resolutions and ordinances and orders and financial orders, which I also think we should do on the agenda template. Which would be in the appendix. I also would love if we could make some flow charts, not to be a complete nerd about it. That highlight the path for each of these processes, just because I think it would help increase public awareness, have a visual representation. In addition to sort of the, the wordy rules. So, um, that would be something I would be happy to help draft up.
Right, I'm going to make a comment, yeah, because that's interesting, member Baskin, I often wanted, wanted something like that as well on the council webpage. You know, just a little bit more explanation to the workings of council and the limits and. Of council power and such. So that's, that's, thank you for that. Okay, well, um. Are there any more comments on this agenda item, finance committee? Talking about it for a while, huh? Dreaming about it. Okay, so now we are on to section five. Uh, section five rules including second reading. So, uh, let's see. Been waiting for this one and anyone have, yes, councillor Foster.
You know, I, I just, I'm gonna say that I remember very early in our council term. Councillor Dwight, I think we might have even been in person. And you were ruminating on second readings and how much you disliked them. And at the time, as a brand new councillor, I thought, no, I actually really like the second reading because it gives me time to ruminate and think and. Clarify, but councillor Dwight, I have come around and, um. What I, what I think, you know, we can consider as a council is. That second readings don't need to happen as a matter of course, but I think that what we might consider is making it. A part of the process if a councillor requests one, that it's not like. Oh my gosh, that councillor just requested a second reading, but that it could be a normal part of the process if somebody feels like they need more time or. Information was introduced at a meeting that they hadn't expected or something, but as a matter of course, I, I don't think we should do them.
Interesting. Uh, uh, Vice Chair Simon and councillor Dwight.
Um, so I think fundamentally the issue is two votes. Um, it's, it's, it's being called two readings, but the, the rules require two votes. On everything except for a specific list of exceptions. And I've always wondered like why, I mean, when you have a vote, that's supposed to be the end of it. So that, I do however, see some value in the idea of two readings. If your intent is to, uh, allow. The public to know that there's an issue that's going to be decided at your next meeting. Then there's value to, to introducing it without a vote. Um, I actually had some suggested language, um, that I want to offer, which is. Before a vote on a matter may be held, it must first have been introduced at a prior city council meeting. Introduction shall include a description of purpose and effects. Council discussion is allowed for questions and clarifications. That allows an issue to, to come forward for people to understand there's something to be considered. You can have some discussion if. You want at the time, but the vote would happen at the, at the subsequent, the following meeting. Eliminates two votes, it keeps. Two meetings of introduction or, or, uh, or a discussion of a topic. Um, if you don't want to have any prior introduction of a top before a vote, then we can, you know, just eliminate the section in the rules that, that require two votes.
Councillor Dwight.
To be clear, I actually, my objection was not so much to the two votes or the consideration, although it is. But we've misunderstood the concept of two readings. Uh, it's to what Al was saying. Two readings are required. It is, the first reading occurs at the introduction, the second reading comes at the point of vote. And for some reason, Northampton. Went off the rails at one point, decided that meant two votes at each reading, which is not the case. It's not the case under Roberts rules, not the case under Massachusetts general law, it's not the case under any other municipal system. So, you know, I think you retain the, the concept of readings, that's fine, but don't call them votes. We've, we've turned them into votes. That's not the case. As far as the luxury the councillor Foster was talking about of, of someone who's not confident of the facts that are before them and not prepared to make a vote. They're actually, we already have mechanisms in these rules that allow for. You can table, you can postpone, you can have minority or majority reconsideration of each item. So there's, there's about four avenues in which you can cause. A second vote if necessary, if, if someone feels that those pressures are there. The reason we've never exercised those is because we automatically have two votes regardless. And in this case, to run more efficiently, to run in a sense that actually conforms with the. Proper definitions of what readings are and the way we function under Roberts rules, which is allows for these opportunities. I think, you know, actually, I like Al's recommended language, you know, to thereby define the first reading. And then we can also say a second reading where the, uh, and this is, we've had some discussion about this. Where it's, it's reintroduced for a vote. Whether we're going to require the chair to read the entire document or, uh, and that's, you know. I think, I think we can require that and then subject to suspension of rules in the case that. For instance, where we've had some things that could go ad nauseam and serve no purpose other than to hurt people. And to cause someone to have a really painful experience trying to read that, but. That being the case, I would think. What we're describing makes much more sense. It's more accessible to the, to the, uh, uh, to the public as well. It, it doesn't have these confusing terms. It makes sense when you say a reading, we're reading it. When you're voting, you're voting it. Those, that, it should be pretty straightforward and in Northampton's unique. Um, style, we've, we've never done that. And that's the thing that I've always took a scunner to.
Thank you. Uh, member Baskin.
Yeah, I like, I was, I like Vice Chair Simon's proposed language. I don't think we should do two votes on things unless there's a specific reason to, and I think there are mechanisms in the rules to make that happen. I do, I think in terms of clarity of language, it's, it would be clearest to say, and I think this is what's in Al's language. The first time is introducing it and the second time is voting. I actually think the language of reading is a little bit confusing too, just in that it. I think that's part of where we got in this trap of having to read everything out loud all the time, which we'll get to that next on the agenda, but I think is silly. Um, so I, I think the. Introduction. It's, it should be introduced in one meeting and then it should be voted on the subsequent meeting. Um, my curiosity here is that list of things that are, okay, did you put the language? Yeah, that's perfect. I like that language. I think my question is about, actually, um, rule five point six, the matters requiring one vote. Um, and whether these things, whether this is now unnecessary because everything needs one vote. Or whether there are any of these things that don't need to be introduced in one meeting. And then, for example, like approval of the minutes. I don't think that should have to be introduced in one meeting and approved in the next. I think it should just be introduced and approved on the consent agenda in the same meeting. So I wonder if there's a way that we could preserve some elements of this list. As sort of exceptions, things that can be introduced and voted on in the same meeting, but I would love to remove administrative orders from that because I don't understand why they're treated differently.
Um, yes, Vice Chair Simon.
Uh, member Baskin is thinking along the same lines as me with this because we got rid of requirement for two, then we don't need to list those requiring one. Um, however, if, if ultimately we end up recommending the idea that it's introduced for discussion and voted separately. You probably still need a list of items that are exempted from that requirement.
So councillor Jared has his hand up. I don't know if you can see that right now.
I can't, I, yeah, my, my screen is very funky and, um, I could. So I, so please let me know if, um, yeah, if people have, have, or have their hand up, because I can't actually see most of the screens. Does councillor Jared have his hand up? I can, I also can't get to the, yeah, I can't get to the participant list either. Okay, well, um, recognize councillor Jared.
Uh, thank you councillor Mayory. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry, it's very dark here. Um, the, uh, so I'm appreciating this discussion. I did want to clarify. The question of, uh, you know, for example, resolutions, would they be introduced? Just, just getting the list of all the different things that we do and which, which ones would require two reading or which ones would, would be introduction. And then vote at a subsequent meeting, uh, and which wouldn't. I also wanted to point out an additional mechanism that I don't think we've ever, we've used in this term. I don't know if councillor Dwight. You remember people using it, but it's called a charter objection. And, um, prior to a vote, any councillor may delay, uh, an item to the following meeting. Just it's kind of a, a superpower of, of one councillor. So that's also a, a kind of a final, um, way in which even if, you know, the, the tabling or the postponing is not, does not work, then. Then that, that's another, another ability. Uh, my question was, so the introduct, there are many items that we refer. Uh, ordinances and zoning ordinances, of, of course, uh, how do? So we would have our initial discussion at the referral time. And right now, you know, when we, when we do. The referral, it, it's, the discussion is limited to, you know, how are we going to do the referral? Is that, but, but instead it sounds like, and this is where I would like clarification, this, it would be. Opened to more broad discussion and that would be our, our first time and then it would be referred out. And then it would come back and then we would have our, our vote. Is that what you're intending?
Councillor Dwight.
Well, if I may, so when it's introduced, um, you can have a more expansive conversation, but not deliberation. That's the most important part, I think. The, you don't want to debate it, but if you want to have questions and clarifications. I think that's appropriate, but it's not appropriate at that point to debate it unless, of course, the council agrees that's what they want to do and do it in that meeting. The other issue relative to resolutions, resolutions, as you know, are subject to referral. Have been referred, um, sometimes as a delaying tactic, uh, a strategic delaying tactic, good recall. On the, uh, camera restriction debate. Um, there was a resolution as well as an order and there was, it was delayed. By a councillor who referred it to committee in the hopes that it would slow it down by about two or three months, which in fact it did, but so. He, he, but that's, I mean, it's allowed, it's an allowed use and, and, and at times very appropriate. And, and I'm sure that councillor would argue that was appropriate, so. And in a lot of, oftentimes, this is one of the things when councillor O'Donnell was drafted the rules that we currently work under. It was, he was concerned about something that you see happen in the state legislature and had, had happened previously in the city of Northampton. But the rules were used literally to essentially destroy or kill, uh, 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 an item. Um, you know, in, in the legislature, they send it to committee and if it's never addressed, the committee dies there, just dies and ignored. You can't do that here. All in, it's specifically stated in our rules that you have to address every item at some point. I mean, you can set up delay systems, but the fact is, is the, it, it will not be delayed to death and that's the biggest concern. And so far, I mean, you know, we, we haven't seen that happen with anyone in this, uh, most, in the last two current bodies, but. It is, we just want to be mindful that when we set up the rules, we're not setting up the rules for the people who will be sitting in this thing. It's the rules for whomever will prospectively be sitting in these places as well. So the resolutions can be referred. Uh, and, and, uh, whereas the sponsors would be expected probably to show up at, at, at whatever meeting to. Wherever it gets referred to to make their case for their item. And, um, that seems totally appropriate to me.
Um, so I guess, uh, if I may ask one more question. Does that, so as councillor Dwight described, it would be. We would not be, we would have one opportunity for debate other than that in subcommittees and such, um, unless. Unless we, again, just unless someone decides they want to delay. In whatever method they choose. And so I'd have just asked the committee to. Reflect on that and make sure that is the intention. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, any more comments on section five rules and second readings? Uh, councillor Foster and Vice, and Vice Chair Simon.
I, I apologize because I was managing kids and dogs. Um, so I, I just want to be sure that I sort of, uh, am, am up to speed with what we. Have talked about, um, which is the idea that many matters would be introduced at a meeting. Um, with the vote to come at the subsequent meeting and then. The work would be to, to make sure we hone down on exactly which matters, um, would not be eligible for vote at the meeting where they're introduced. Am I? Am I correct with, with where we're at right now?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thanks. Oh, and I like it. Okay. Oh, and I like it. Okay.
And she likes it. Okay. Vice Chair Simon.
Oh, I'm already unmuted. Thank you. Um, but councillor Foster's uh question, I mean, right now, the way the rule is, it says to be approved, every matter. Shall have two separate votes. Except for the listed items in the in the following uh uh rule. So. It's set up right now that everything is supposed to be this way unless it's uh unless it's specifically exempted. Um, and my suggestion would would operate the same way, which is that the the text that I've sent in the chat. Applies in all circumstances. And there would still need to be a carve out for exceptions to that as as there currently are. But the I just wanted to add two things because since we're talking about this section, there were two other small pieces. Really housekeeping that I wanted to bring up. One was um. Uh, section five point one point five. Which I found amusing. It's a it's titled supporting documents. And this says maps and visuals along with all other supporting evidence. Essential to a matter shall be presented in a clear and intelligible way. The reason I found it amusing, of course, is there's no way you can mandate that and one person's clear and concise is another person's shambles. So. Uh, I would. Merely suggest that we remove that that section entirely. Uh, the other one was section five point eight point one. Which can can only be eliminated, which is my suggestion, if we eliminate the two votes. So this is uh. What's called automatic carryover. And it says matters that have not passed their required number of votes by the end of the current session. Shall automatically carry over to the next session of the city council and remain. In the council and all committees to which they have been referred to. And I think this gets back a little bit to what. Um, councillor Dwight was was getting at um that. There's a mechanism so that things can't just go away. So as the rules are currently written, requiring two votes, if something only has one vote. It the council must finish that. Obviously, if you eliminate the to vote requirement, then this section isn't isn't necessary at all. So that's that's my only uh comment there. Thanks.
Right. Good point. Uh, councillor Dwight?
Uh, first of all, actually, the point, the the uh. Reason for the requiring the legible documents of there was a history of of. Illegible documents particularly relative to zoning or maps and the like. And I I think there should be something where we can stipulate. It it it's essentially keeping the honest people honest. It's directing. Um, whoever is the presenter, if it's the planning board or if it is the financial. I you know, we used to get financial orders that were printed out in um. At the time, they were uh printed out in Excel, but on Excel documents were so minute that literally was absolutely impossible to see what it was. So in which case there were just, I mean. So they were meeting the criteria of presenting documents with the documents, and this is before we were online. So we would get paper documents. They were completely worthless. They were just uh about half the council. Struggled to see what the hell it was. And the same has happened with some maps, a simple, you know. We were getting maps in some cases that were uh delineating the outline of the border of Northampton with a with a dot in the middle. And that was supposed to be some reference point that was supposed to mean something to us. So what we were asking for was something with something. That would provide information for us as opposed and and by the way, they they've conformed very well since then, and that's that's great. I don't know. You're right. I don't know if we need to stipulate that. Maybe this speaks to the culture argument. Maybe that culture has been established, but it should be. Uh, the reason I like the rule there is there's something we can refer to when we when we ask and demand to have those uh upfront as opposed to after that. Um, the carryover issue becomes pretty tricky on some levels there. And again, this goes back to um. The camera argument oddly enough, we were ending the term, the mayor had vetoed the ordinance. And if there is not a response in a timely effect by the council. To the veto, there's a very, there's prescribed amount of time. Then. The veto stands. We were ending the term. The veto came at the end of the term. It was going to be very difficult to, we actually had to scramble. And I think we maybe even had a special meeting in order to um. Address the issue of the veto. And so it whether it carried over into the other term would have better not a job. It would the veto would have stood and then all the work that was put into that would have fallen, by the way, said. Also. It's there's a difference between council session and council term. So as you know, you're all elected for two years and there's no offset. So it's the same body, the that council changes and it's about to, for instance. A whole new council will convene in January as opposed to just the term ending with standing council. So. I haven't thought this out about what that would mean about carryover. But it it my particular concern. As as uh uh. Coach your Simon, I have Vice Chair Simon, send corrected. Suggested was that we don't want these things to die a born to die by by process maneuver. They they it's our responsibility to to. Second phone calls while this, I mean, uh, it's our responsibility to see these things through, own our vote and make a vote. That's what we're required to do, so.
Member basket.
I think we should look at the carrier language. I agree. I like. Um, Vice Chair Simon's language, as I said, a couple other things in section five that just. Stood out to me in my scanning of it. Um, one is five point two point two about financial orders. And that they shall not be voted. No order resolution authorizing a loan, the levying of a tax or the expenditure of money, with the exception of the printing of the annual reports. Shall be voted on by the city council until it's been considered by the committee on finance. Just flagging that in case that. Conflicts at all with the sort of structure that we just talked about of referring some things to finance, but just sending some things to the consent agenda. Um, I don't know. Maybe the things that we're talking about are not, don't fall into the category of a loan, the levying of a tax or the expenditure of money. Um, like a transfer, for example, I don't think would fall into any of those categories. Um, but I just wanted to flag that as something that might be worth thinking about. Um, and then the other thing I had a question about was. Five point seven, the enrollment committee. Just because um. It's not with the rest of the committees in the same section of the um like it's not a standing committee. We didn't consider it with those. It doesn't meet really. It's just why why is it there?
Uh, councillor Dwight?
The enrollment committee actually is established by state law. Uh, essentially, it requires signatories to items that the council agreed on. Um, it's rather perfunctory. In fact, the way it used to be assigned was whoever the two people sitting, the two councillors sitting to the left of whoever was the chair. Simply because they were closest and it was easier to pass the documents for them to sign. That's what the enrollment committee is. And um. In currently, right now, I'm on the enrollment committee. And Laura sends me a docu sign item for each item that we vote and approve, particularly financial orders. And that's it. So yes, it is unique as far as committees go. The assignment is still made by the chair. Uh, by the president, but uh it's not one of those committees that everyone fights for. It just it's it's that's it doesn't carry the august uh standing that the other ones do.
That's very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Okay, any more comments on? Section five. Second reading, anything? Uh, and I'm I'm willing to entertain a motion as well. Um. Sorry, vice.
I I I defer to Al, please.
Okay.
I was just gonna ask you if you would entertain a motion because I I think we're probably at that point. So uh, my motion would be to uh recommend. Substituting the language in section five point five. Uh, to be. Um, this we would it would have a new title being matters requiring um two readings. And then the text would be uh the text that I have in the um in the chat. Before a vote on a matter may be held, it must have been introduced at a prior city council meeting. Introduction shall include a description of purpose and effects. Council discussion is allowed for questions and clarification. So that will be a wholesale language substitution for five point five.
Second.
Yeah. Uh, Laura. Roll call, please. On the motion.
The Maori.
Yes.
Vice Chair Simon.
Yes.
Member Baskin.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
And councillor Foster.
Yes. Okay, motion passes unanimously. A member basket, excuse me. Oh, the yeah, member basket.
Vice Chair Simon.
I just wanted to add a a housekeeping second uh motion on this, which is. To uh and section five point six to change the title. To be a matters requiring one reading instead of one vote. And then the text to be the following shall require only one reading of the council. And that aligns it with the new language.
I second that.
Motion a second. Um. Member basket.
Um, I would like to. Propose a friendly amendment. I think I'm doing that right. Um, to remove administrative orders submitted by the mayor for other approval or disapproval from that list.
Okay. Um.
Well, it it's it's a friendly amendment, but the the proposer has to accept it.
Yeah, I care.
So I don't I don't feel like I know enough to be able to say yes or no and would actually appreciate if some discussion about that is possible.
Yeah, I think we can discuss that, right?
Well, I'll second it for the I'll second that for the purposes of discussion.
Discussion, okay.
Yeah, I was just, I think the administrative orders often actually do hold a lot more consequence and need for debate than a lot of the other. Sort of pro forma items on this list that are usually in. I'm often in the consent agenda, like approval of minutes and acceptance of reports. My experience in viewing council meetings has been that administrative orders are actually sometimes. Subject to a significant amount of discussion and deliberation. And so. Are I think should be more akin to other orders and ordinances that they're introduced in one meeting and. I'm voted on in the second, particularly because they're generally not particularly time sensitive.
Uh, just is can someone offer maybe an example of that? Because I don't, I I haven't watched enough to know what an example of an administrative order is.
Like changes to the administrative code, I believe, or administrative orders.
I see.
Um, so like restructuring of multi-member bodies, particularly, I think, is an item of consequence that. I think should be introduced in one meeting and voted on the second.
Yep. Um, I I'm happy to accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? So wait, do we need to second the friendly amendment? Councillor Dwight?
No, it's been accepted by the proposer.
Okay. Okay, uh, where are we then? Roll roll call Laura. On the on the motion at with the friendly amendment.
Councillor Maori.
Yes.
Vice Chair Simon.
Yes.
Member Baskin.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
And councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Excellent motion. Oh, councillor Dwight?
So now administrative orders are sitting in limbo. So you better so you better designate how and they how they will be directed and addressed.
Good point. Uh, just. Yeah, uh, councillor Foster.
Member Baskin, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I. Um, administrative orders do often generate discussion, so I appreciate that. Can we? Put administrative orders then back in the category with financial orders and and um. You know, the other the other items that need to be introduced prior to a vote.
Vice Chair Simon.
I think the I think the language of the two pieces take care of everything because. The five point five says this is what you do for everything. And five point six is these are the exceptions to above. So if you've taken administrative orders out of the exceptions, they're in with everything else right now.
Fair enough.
Okay. Who? We need to entertain a motion on that? No.
No. Yeah, councillor, uh. Vice Chair Simon actually nailed it because. Because we're describing the exception as opposed and then it's everything else is presumed to fall under the just of the the initial order, so.
Right. Excellent. Okay. Uh, looks anything else on section five? Then the item. If not, we are moving on to the youth commission. Elijah, thank you for your patience. Let's see, um, member Baskin and councillor Dwight?
I'm so I don't really think this is in our purview senses in the administrative code. Um, but I did have a couple of thoughts um for. The mayor, if he listens to this recording or anyone else, um, I. Think that the it's not the mayor's youth commission in the administrative code. It's just youth commission. So I'm suspecting that the mayor's youth commission is residual. Language that could be eliminated without any change to administrative code or anything. It seems the official name of the body is just youth commission. So totally support the body naming. Calling itself youth commission per the administrative code. And I. Think that the point about the membership count is a really good one and that that would be a great administrative order to um to alter that. But I think it's not in our purview.
Uh, councillor Dwight?
Yeah, of course, I'm the one who introduces or at least asks the discussion. And in fact, actually, I was glad Megan showed up too. Human Rights Commission. Disabilities Commission. The Youth Commission. Again, it comes down to issues of definition. Commission and committees are different things. I mean, the committees review internal. Um, matters and legal matters and and you know, as we say, we refer things to committee for further discussion. Commissions are external analysis that providing. Advice or there were the things that we're talking about, we were having discussions about committees. The Youth Commission. I was there at the beginning of the Youth Commission. I was there at the beginning of the Human Rights Commission in particular. Uh, Disabilities Commission has changed substantially all those those the uh Human Rights Commission, Disabilities Commission were. Basically constrained or expanded under state law. So there are some things that we can and cannot do as or those commissions can and cannot do. That they once upon a time did do. Youth Commission is unique. In um, there are youth commissions throughout the state. Northampton's was different. There is actually a youth commission association, which we're actually not part of because we actually. Uh, bestowed upon our youth commissioners greater latitude and authority. That they've used to good effect, as you've noticed, but at the same time, there is. Right now, there's this kind of amorphous definition of what their what their mission is. Um, and as such, it's it's caused some confusion and also. Um, we we we've had some problems with violations of open meeting law of the state if they were reviewing the way we conducted our youth commission may maybe subject to criticism. Other usually they would avoid that. There wouldn't be that. There there wouldn't be that challenge, but the fact is. Our youth commission now is currently actually generating law. Uh, law that's subject to uh the possibility of of liability and. Uh, more recent one is is there is a possibility that there could be. Um, legal action, in which case, if we're not found. Functioning and performing in the way that state code requires, it could be um voided. And there could be other consequences. I mean, no one's going to uh. Commission jail, but the fact is that we we could lose all this hard work. That is why and this this. Basically, what I was entreating us to do was to ponder it and and Elijah's absolutely right. And I I. I've asked the commission to consider this too. The other unique dimension of the commission is it changes mid-year for in most respects. It changed they they're uh, you know. They come back in September, they're gone during the summer, but we in many cases, we lose over a third to a half of commissioners in the intervening intervening time. But we, in many cases, we lose over a third to a half of commissioners in the intervening time. Because they go on, they graduate. Um, we have to figure out, no other commission actually functions like that. Now, it's Elijah's was elected interim uh, chair with Dahlia. But the fact is, is there gonna be another election when we convene again in the new session? And then and Elijah, I, I think Elijah's likely to survive, but I keep it's not a given and we can't play that out of the rules. So there's all sorts of anomalies here that we don't have to answer. It's just ones I want to consider. And there that the future council going in and the future youth commission going in with the future mayor going in. They have an expansive and thoughtful conversation about this very useful group. But let's define them in a way that conforms with state law and also their charges. Because actually, the, right now, the youth commission's victims of its own successes and good work. Um, so is part of I'm, you know, as I said, I'm particularly concerned when we start to proceed with with as we create law, which is ultimately on us. But the youth commission has served as cosponsors on no less than five laws in the city so far that are on the books. So that there's some, that's remarkable. That's remarkable, but at the same time, it is subject to a challenge and we should be prepared to meet the challenge should it come. And at this point, we're not in a very good position to do that, should that happen. And that's my concern. So um, you know, and I, when I get a chance to speak to the youth commission, I will say, and I, by the way, for those who don't know, I serve as a council liaison. Which is another bizarre thing. I'm the council liaison. We had a, we had a council liaison to the Human Rights Commission as well. But that wasn't a council committee. It's not a council committee. I don't, I'm not a voting member. I'm just the annoying old guy sitting in the corner in this case. And and so as such, it's, there's the lines of accountability are very vague and not clearly defined. The uh, protocols and rules are a little squishier as well. Membership has always been open. Um, and Elijah's right, we haven't, we haven't obliged, we haven't abided by the twenty-one person rule. And at any given time, twenty-one, thirty people may show up. They usually show up for the swearing in. And the hardcore true believers stay, and that's usually about fourteen or fifteen people on uh, as a rule. And um, they stay committed and devoted. My other concern about the youth commission has been it is homogenous, is very homogenous. It, they are all excellent students, all from the high school. And it's tricky. We need a broader representation of opinions, cultures, classes, children who aren't in school, children, uh, I I'm sorry, I even use that term. Commissioners who are not in school, commissioners are couch surfing, commissioners who go to the Smith Vocational. Uh, commi- commissioners who are of the proper age, who are count as Northampton residents. Should be members of the commission. They're not excluded, but the fact is that we've never been very successful in trying to recruit them. We've on occasion we have. But I I've, we've had members from the Cutchins program, we have members from uh, Smith Vocational, we we have had some houseless teenagers who actually did have no identifiable address, but we made an allowance. And that's actually enriched the conversations because there's pushback and 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 other issues. So that's, uh, so that's my entreaty is to basically ask beyond this committee, but the future council and the future mayor and the and the future youth commission to actually come up with something that can be meet legal robust requirements.
Thank you. That was a good point about the the legal accountability issue. Uh, I think Member Baskin had a comment.
Oh yeah, it was quick. I just, I think the answer to the twenty-one members is from Mass General Law. Um, the the relevant Mass General Law section says the commission shall consist of no less than three no more nor more than twenty-one members. So actually, in having more than twenty-one members, you might be in violation of Mass General Law regarding youth commissions more broadly. Um, so that's, that's probably where that twenty-one number comes from and why it's that.
Yeah, I wonder if you can have like associate members that wouldn't count towards that twenty-one. Yes, Counselor Dwight.
Well, as far as, actually, we don't conform with any of that law. Establishing youth commissions. We, this is something that actually was created by Claire Higgins in response to something that I continue to complain about. That we continue to talk about them without them, that we continue to make rules about banishing children from the steps of City Hall because they're hanging out and uh, and other issues like that or skateboarding issues and things. We were making all sorts of rules pretending we knew we remember what it was like to be taming, so or at least condemning ourselves. Uh, condemning them based on what the way we were at that age. And those without a conversation or discussion of them. So Claire Higgins, to appease me, established this kind of this made up version of youth commission, something that would be different, unique. I'm moving on, doesn't have to be anything to appease me anymore. That's, and Claire Higgins has certainly moved on. She describes herself as a recovering politician. And I think that it it, there is, that in the youth commission, as I said, has evolved into something that that exceeds the expectations of youth commissions in the state law, which was basically this sort of perfunctory, you know, isn't it cute, look what they're doing type of arrangement. We actually have a highly functioned viable system here that provides substantive contribution to the discussion of governance in 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 Northampton. And and it will even become more important if the the charter change that they created and advocated for of sixteen-year-old votes comes into effect. And at that point, I I just, I think there's an opportunity here, but as I said, as it's evolved, it needs that clarification, because the, most critically, it it has to survive challenges to what they do, the work they do.
Um, I just wanna let Elijah, you, I'm recognizing Elijah for call, so if you have any comments at any point, I'm also having trouble, um, if you I'm not always seeing raised hands, so just let me know. If you have a, any kind of comments or questions, Elijah. And um, yeah, and I think Vice Chair Simon has his hands up. Yeah, Elijah, do you wanna make a comment and then?
Actually, uh, um, Vice Chair Simon can go first. It it might be easier to like hear all of the the different feedback and then have me um, ask my questions um, after that.
Okay. Yeah, so Vice Chair Simon.
Actually, I just wanted to respectfully ask what the connection is between this topic and the city council rules. Which is our charge.
That is a fair question, and there isn't one, to be honest. The reason I asked it to be considered of the rules under committees and discussions, since there's no there's no agency, the, there isn't a a an agency that actually could be considered in the mayor's office either. So in fact, it it is, it's me make taking a squishy issue that doesn't really have a direct corollary with what we're discussing under the rules. There's no rule, there's no action item essentially. As I said, there's no action item, at least to this commission. Because we don't have commissions.
Okay, uh, so Elijah.
Uh, sure, yeah. Yes, uh, thank you, um, Counselor Dwight, uh, for uh, that feedback. That that was very helpful and I'm you know, there there were some things in there that I didn't know particularly around, you know, they had the history of the youth commission, some um, you know, legal scrutiny that could potentially come up, but a lot of it, I'm, I'm, you know, I I was you know, have been aware of these issues and I'm glad we're um, we're, we're, we're raising them. So it's my, let me just look over my notes for a second. It's um, it's um, it's, so to clarify what you said about uh, the the membership number. So the the Massachusetts state law only states that twenty-one member limit. Does that apply to just youth commissions or does that apply to all govern? Okay, so it just applies to youth commissions? Okay, and City Councilor Dwight, I, uh, you're saying that it it um, the Northham, the youth commission is essentially like a different legal construction than other youth commissions, even though we have the same.
It's a different construction. I don't know if it's legal. There's the rub.
Right, okay. Um, um, okay, yeah, but but as of, but as of now, it is, it is a different thing. Okay. Do you think is that, is um, do you think that Claire is clarifying that potentially gonna be something that we need to do in terms of making sure that the youth commission is legally sound and will hold up under challenge and scrutiny?
Yes, I do. I think that's very important. I think that would be the most in charge, important charge of the youth commission, the coming council and the mayor uh, early on. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, um, okay, so we'll, we'll just have to figure out, um, we'll, we'll just have to figure out how to um, how to kind of think about, um, you know, if we need to, if we need our if we have, if we are over the membership limit, how to like potentially um, not maybe have people just be members of subcommittees like our our working groups or 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 other, other things we can do around that or or just not have as many members. Um, i- in terms of how the youth commission kind of like conduct our affairs more soundly than we have in the past and and really follow uh, open meeting law better. It's my understanding that the main two things that we have not done in the past and that we are gonna, we've already talked about trying to do very consistently this year is um, is uh, like sending our agendas in on time for full group as well as working group meetings. And then when the youth commission is uh, either co-sponsoring an ordinance or or, you know, writing a statement or something like that to make sure that that language is voted on by the full commission. And that 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 vote is, you know, clearly um, like accounted for in our, in in our, our our minutes. Is there something that I'm missing there in terms of real blind spots that the youth commission has had in the way of open meeting law compliance?
Um, yeah, the the way the subcommittees convene and conduct this, it's the same way. It has to be done the same way. Um, and has not. And that that when a subcommittee convenes, that they have to submit their agenda and post it before forty-eight hours before. All votes or recommendations should be recorded in the minutes and then forwarded. So not, I mean, you guys have been, yeah. And 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 I I I have to in deference to the rest of the committee members here, this isn't, this is something we should probably talk about the youth commission. Elijah mostly because this, it doesn't really have any relevance to the members here and I don't wanna, I don't wanna overload them on that. But yeah, I mean, at the next meeting, since you set the agenda, you might consider this as an agenda item to be addressed. And I'd be glad to participate. I'm sure any one of the members here would be interested, could also come and and
How about Solicitors See Wall? Would that be a good addition?
We've had Solicitor See Wall come every year to to discuss open meeting law and things, but the the body is amorphous, it changes. Uh, and as I said, I mean, I think right now we probably have like thirty members sworn in and and that's not who shows up. And and they change. So, but it's worth it's particularly for the two interim chairs to to be apprised of what what the challenges are here.
Yeah, that's a big responsibility. Elijah, that's a big responsibility. Uh, and I do wonder about what the definition of member and, you know, uh, uh, in in the MGL and what that could look like in terms of still including um, interested participation from youth community. Just wondering about that. Maybe that's something Solicitor See Wall would be able to weigh in on, but.
Yeah, um, I, I think, oh.
Yeah, no, please, please, uh, go on, Elijah.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just gonna say like, uh, you know, like Bill said, I understand this isn't directly related to the work of this committee, but I just like to, um, you know, thank you again for discussing this issue. Uh, I think it's really important and I look forward to um, City Councilor Dwight, uh, hopefully, uh, discussing this with you more at 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 one of one of one of our upcoming meetings, so.
Thank you for, thank you for participating, Elijah. Very, very illuminating. Okay, so any more discussion on this topic? No, no motions. Okay. Okay, let's see, where are we? Uh, eliminating reading documents into the record. Oh, Counselor Foster.
I'm just gonna back up for one quick second on um, the youth commission. And I just wanted to verify, Counselor Dwight, did you with with adding this to the, or requesting this be on the agenda, did you have any desire to sort of talk about the struck, the council structure as it relates to the youth commission? You know, like how some commissions have actual council members. This one has a liaison. Did was that something that you wanted to, that you wanted to bring up for discussion or or not?
Yes, and 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 now that I think about, maybe, maybe it's not appropriate, but yes, I mean, the the it was always understood it was, it was, as a commission, it advised the mayor, but point in fact, actually, almost exclusively all uh, dealings with anyone in the uh, government was with the council. And as such, but without any council constraints or or or, you know, you know, direct oversight. And so I think to go backwards, we have to define what the youth commission is first before we figure out whether it does come under the auspices of the council and whether the council should prescribe rules for it. Or if it comes in the auspices of the mayor or whatever. So I think that has to be determined first. And I, and and I think it can, it's just, it's challenging and it's, it's a moving target, so. So right now, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to have a discussion about that because I don't, it might not apply.
And then the recommendation would have to be um, to the 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 new mayor. Because since it requires an administrative order. Just clarifying. Yeah, okay. Okay, well, any other youth commission comments? No. Let's see, so yes, eliminating reading uh, documents into the record. Member Baskin.
I don't think this is the reading the documents out loud into the records in the rules anywhere, at least not that I've been able to find. I think it's a cultural issue. I personally find it of very little value. Um, the current council president, um, who is on this call, is really masterful at reading the items into the record really, really quickly. But I think so quickly that it, people couldn't comprehend them if that was the primary way they were trying to understand the item. So it feels like it's not, and the items are screen shared, they're linked to the agenda. They're like, they're accessible in a number of other ways. It feels to me like it's actually doing an access disservice to take the time to read the items out loud into the record. I think it lengthens the meeting substantially and um, sort of the benefit drawback of that, I think that it is of more, it's more of a detriment than it is a value, in my opinion. That said, ultimately, I think this is something that is really like hmm. I don't know that we need to make a rule about it as much as just like, I I'd like to highlight, this is a cultural choice that the council is making. The council does not need to do this. The rules don't prescribe it. And it, there doesn't need to be any kind of allowance made to say, we're not gonna read this. It doesn't have to be a motion about it. The things just don't have to be read out loud unless you all want them to be read out loud. So I just would hope that the council could take that and um, maybe make a different choice about that, particularly when meetings are long. I think there's totally could be a value to reading certain things out loud, but particularly when it's a list of numbers, it's a financial order. Reading it out loud is of, I think, no benefit. So I just wanted to But particularly when it's a list of numbers, it's a financial order, reading it out loud is, I think, no benefit. So I just wanted to introduce that and sort of. That's all. That's all I had to run that.
Yes, um, Council Foster.
This is more of a question. I don't know, Laura, if you have the answer, or I'm happy to seek the answer. Um, but a member of asking your point about how the documents are linked to the website. And it had me wondering if our website is fully accessible to people who are using screen readers, because that would be. A reason to read out loud and and. But that can be handled in a different way. And and I don't know, Laura, do you happen to know?
I don't know the answer to that.
That's something we could find out because that would be, you know, just a piece of it. And and I'm happy to to find out.
And I could inquire.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Member Baskin.
Yeah, also to make sure the PDFs that are being generated are accessible and accessible to screen readers as well. Um, but that should be, I mean, it's a basic tenet of accessibility compliance. I would hope that the city's website is screen readable. That would be quite concerning if it isn't.
Right. Uh, let's see. Vice Chair Simon.
Yeah, hundred percent with. With Member Baskin on this. Clearly, some members of the council don't like this norm, which is why it's on our agenda tonight, but. Uh, Member Baskin is a hundred percent right. There's nothing in the rules about this. And it's really norms versus rules, and norms are very powerful. As we have already seen, there's a number of. Cultural norms that the council has in place that have no relation. To the rules. And so simply, if people don't want it anymore, they just need to stop.
Um. Counsel Dwight.
One of the things that concerns me is that. This could be exploited by a less thoughtful council or council president. And items could be introduced that the public would have no idea what they are, other than the brief descriptive narrative, which often employs acronyms, for instance, particularly. When it relates to zoning issues, for instance, you. You get an alphabet soup that does not offer clarity. And zoning items usually come to people's attention when they're introduced into the. Council meeting. Not that they have to be read in full, but I think some descriptive. Language that does not employ acronyms that actually uses full terms, so everyone knows what the hell they're talking about. And I have to say that there are counselors and I include myself. Sometimes these acronyms come up and I have no idea what they're referencing. I don't know what it means. I agree, there's. The insane boilerplate required. I mean, that, you know, was. Much of was drafted back in the mid nineteenth century. That has languages that really difficult to navigate and really just painful and does not impart information to folks. It just. Brain kills them. So I I. Have no problem with that. I don't, but eliminating it entirely. Or eliminating some descriptor of the item before the council. Would make me feel uncomfortable. I I would. So if 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 each item comes up with a descriptive narrative that essentially. Describes the nut of the item. Without the use of acronyms with clear concise language, then I'd be all for this.
Uh, member, um, yes, Member Baskin.
I didn't have a full thought, just that if there was a less thoughtful council right now. Or in the next term, they they already don't are not obliged to read it. So. They they could do it with it entirely without any change to the rules. Because it's it's purely cultural. It's purely a norm.
Right, so it sounds like there's. Two parts of. Thought process and recommendation, one about. How how, you know. Explaining further. To our public and via the website and and our agenda. And a recommendation about this norm. And not engaging in this norm. Yes, Counsel Dwight.
So just be cautious about the term norm. There are actually there are things, for instance, that are not described in the rules like. Uh, style sheet. Laura actually drafts and creates the document that looks as the agenda. None of that's. Dictated in the rules. Uh, it is a style sheet essentially that Laura has evolved as. Created herself, but it was also there was a template that preceded the ones that we currently use. And that in in some way is a norm as well, but the fact is it has value. Purpose of it is to impart information to the council and make it facilitate the discussion. Um, absent those. You know, in that case, those norms and those those templates. Um. You the experiences much can be much different and actually much more opaque. And so that's my concern. That's all.
Any other comments on? Or any recommendations? Counsel Dwight.
Uh, my recommendation, as I said, if 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 each item could be introduced with a descriptive paragraph. Or a one or two lines. But that is clear and concise, does not involve acronyms. Be read as each item comes up as opposed to item twelve point zero zero five. And then have everyone vote on that. That's not transparency. So if if that could, and and again, this that doesn't have to be in the rules. But then, uh, you know, it would be something that maybe Laura would draft, but it would have to be in conjunction probably with. I I don't know, it would have to correspond, you know. I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't know who would basically have to have oversight on that, but I think, you know. Deferring to staff in that case is is probably appropriate. I don't want to make more work for work. She does a great job of this already. But I I would feel a lot more comfortable if if some standard or some. Rule were established or at least protocol.
Yeah, Vice Chair Simon.
So this is this is for the introduction of a matter before the council, right? Um, so I'm wondering if the language that we have just adopted. On the two readings actually is sufficient for this. And I'll read it again. Uh, before a vote on a matter may be held, it must have been introduced at a prior city council meeting. Introduction shall include shall include a description of purpose and effects. Uh, council discussion is allowed for questions and clarification. So I guess the relevant sentence is introduction shall include a description of purpose and effects. If you feel that's sufficient, that's efficient. If not, we could actually modify this language to whatever. You think is necessary to. Accomplish your goal.
No, I agree. I I accept that. I think that that just indicated that that would also be. On the agenda. So the agenda as is presented to the public when it's available to the public. That they would be able to read that descriptor. And it would be available to them. And how we phrase that, I don't know.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you could. Like I'm blanking on a good word, but you want it to be digestible to the public, you know, want some practical amount of clarity. But I I'm not thinking of the word right now.
I mean, we do do that now, although if you look at an agenda, you if you, I mean. There's shorthand because Laura doesn't want it. We don't want to have Laura write fourteen pages of stuff for people, but the fact is that there is a shorthand and. Sometimes that shorthand, it it means something to us, but it might not mean anything to the public or might might obfuscate. And I. And that's my biggest concern. So I think actually to Vice Chair Simon's recommendation, I I would subscribe to the language. And if that can be also incorporated on the agenda. As before the items are introduced.
I think, you know, I'm just gonna comment that I. A broader discussion, perhaps a new council, you know, this is maybe a resource that the council needs. You know, whether that's, you know, a physical person like an intern or, you know. You know, paid intern or some 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 sort of community outreach. Well, not really outreach, but. Really focusing on. Making our meetings and our agendas. User friendly to our to our community. It's just something that we could. Think about, but. That could be a whole role. That sounds like it really could be a whole role for a person. Yawn Laura. So is that? So is that? Um, a motion to recommend? That. Are there any more comments?
I mean, that can stand as a motion to recommend, but yeah.
Okay.
It it's not a rule.
Right. So, okay. So you're saying we don't need a second.
It doesn't need to be voted on. I mean, it's something we can forward and have them when we debate it on the floor, but.
Right. I mean, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna issue a report to to share with full council from the select committee, and we can. Certainly include. Include that in in the report, just to bring light to it. You know, I might really clarify. I don't know, frankly, I don't know that I knew or other counselors know. That it's kind of a norm, lack of a better word, and not a rule to read. You know, to read these documents. So just even stating that might be of use.
It is worth asking the solicitor if Massachusetts general law requires an actual verbal. Recitation of of items.
Interesting.
Sure, yeah.
Right. Here, I will, I will, uh. Make sure we run that by him by by our next meeting. Um, any other comments on this last agenda item? No, okay. Um, well, I think we're done with our agenda.
I'm sure. I move to adjourn.
Well, do we have our next?
Second. Oh.
We're we've scheduled meetings.
I just wanted to clarify them since. There's been some, just some lack of clarity. So would we just take a moment to? Um, I actually don't have my calendar. Laura, do you have your calendar?
The next two are October twelfth and twenty six. I think I understood you guys to decide to meet the second and fourth Tuesdays on an ongoing basis.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Sounds good. Uh, yeah, so.
And as I said, I won't be able to make the twelfth, just. But that that go proceed without me.
Yeah. You don't want us to. Okay.
No, don't don't reschedule that. I mean, there's your time's too short. The pressures are too intense and.
Well.
I think I I have a I have an all day meeting that starts from eight and goes until like nine o'clock that night. So. There's, yeah, and I would, I wouldn't. I I think. I think you can soldier on without me.
Well, when you see the agenda, Counsel Dwight, you could send any comments and I will read them aloud.
There you go.
Or not. Okay, one one final motion that I interrupted.
It it's on the floor.
Oh, it's on the floor. Okay, yes.
Roll call.
Roll roll call. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Mayori.
Yes.
Vice Chair Simon.
Yes.
Member Baskin.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes. Yes, move to adjourn. Okay, adjourn. Uh, thank you, everyone. Eight oh four, I'm impressed with us.
Good night, y'all.
See ya.